Test, test, test. Test one, test two. Test, test. Test. Test, test, test. Test, test, test. Test, test. Test, test, best test, test. Test. Test.
That worked.
All right, we are going to reconvene at seven o'clock. Take a, there were no votes taken in executive session. So, so we called the meeting to order at 7:01. We're gonna start with roll call. Stuart Lander?
Here.
And Brad Shear is absent. Kate Massanani?
Here.
Paula Whitford?
Here.
Michelle Brusseau? James Justivo?
Here.
And I, Carol Vetter, are here. Please join me in the pleasure of Legion.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its very father, the Constitution. I am a, I'm a, I'm a very proud patriot of the Constitution as well.
You gotta, you gotta get that light back in.
Do I have a motion to seal the minutes, or?
Yes.
Seal the minutes of executive session?
I'll make a motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. I'm going to repeat, there was no votes taken in executive session. So we're going to move on to number three, comments from the community. Does there anybody out in the audience that would like to approach the podium? All right, on the off chance that somebody wants to speak later, I'm going to close the public comment for now. But we can reopen it at the very end of the meeting if somebody comes that does want to speak. All right, that moves us on to the consent agenda.
My motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. We'll move to the superintendent's report.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, good evening. I have a very brief report for, for this evening. Next slide, please, with two items, personnel and a Wakefield Elementary. We had two leaves of absence to close out this school year. Starting in June and ending on the last day of school. I also, although it's been publicly known for some time, have put it out here and would like to thank Ms. Amy Hubertis, Vice Principal of Peasdale Elementary for her service to the district. She is deciding, or will be taking her talents elsewhere. But we thank her for her commitment and lending those talents to the district over the past few years. I would also like to take this opportunity, we have begun to staff for the next school year already. And I'm pleased to, I believe, welcome back Anne Marie Donnell as a school social worker. As well as welcome to the district Jessica Dumack, who will be at West Kingston. Next slide, please. I am very pleased to report and, and have with us here folks who helped to make that happen. So I would like to thank Mr. John, our interim facilities director, Mr. Gould, who is here for not only his team's work, but also his work as well as whether, or in addition to former finance director, Ryan Kilpatrick, who helped expedite the materials, getting the materials out of Wakefield Elementary School. So the building is now clear of district property. I believe there may be a few items remaining that need to come on out. That were sold on Gov bids, or, excuse me, Gov deals, I believe it's, is unfortunately. The purchase price of some of the deals, boy, were they deals. You know, we're talking $3 for certain things. We're talking, you know, minimal pieces, nothing that is going to unfortunately pay for significant amounts of materials. However, it has been, it has been cleared out. I'd also like to thank members of the, of the town, specifically Mr. Mark Russo, Facility Superintendent for the town, who has been a wonderful partner in this and who has helped along the way and is working with Mr. Gould on the final steps. I do have confirmation from Dr. Joseph De Silva that all required notice prior to this school year. Actually, when Superintendent Prince was in the district, that accurate notice and appropriate notice was given, both in the change of facilities, the intent to close, as well as our obligation to inform surrounding communities of said closures. He, and he has recently then, Dr. De Silva says there are no other steps from his office. However, he has connected me with Mr. Mario Gonsoles in order to document future efforts and make sure that things that as they move forward. I have reached out to Mr. Gonsoles and, and have not heard back yet in terms of next steps. However, next slide, please. That does not stop us from planning those next steps. We have begun the final walkthroughs of the schools in town, making sure plaques are down, making sure that, you know, routers, that anything worth of value or anything that needs to be sold, that is, has been sold, can be, or anything of value that needs to be moved, has been. So those final walkthroughs on our part, as well as the town Mr. Russo has gone through, and I believe he's just waiting for confirmation from his, from the town manager that they are ready, willing, and able to take over. That then would require, hopefully, again, I will wait for RIDE confirmation on this. But I do anticipate, or would like to anticipate, that we will be able to take action at our next meeting to turn over care, custody, and control of the Wakefield Elementary School buildings, as well as said property over to the town. We will then document that action with RIDE, barring any other communications from them. But we will still keep on the, keep on our radars, the time capsule that needs to come on out, which actually Mr. Gould has a personal connection to because he is ready to reclaim some elements that he put into said time capsule in November. So. And with that, that concludes my report. I'm happy to take any questions if there are.
Curiosity. When was the time capsule buried? Thank you.
Yep, 50-year anniversary. November, I want to say, what's, 26, I believe. So, well, that I'm not positive of, but it was definitely in November 1975.
No, I just want to say thank you for finally getting Wakefield School cleaned out. Glad to finally get it over to the town. So just want to thank you and your team for doing that.
Absolutely. My pleasure. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Yeah, okay.
The school committee action happening on July 15th, I'm just wondering what is the financial obligation from the school district for the building? When does that switch over, when do those funds switch over to coming from the town, as far as maintenance and upkeep of the building?
That would be upon this body's motion to, to do that. And I have not heard that it would take the town council acceptance. So that's the one piece that I'm waiting on, but ultimately us returning that care, custody, and control over from this body to them, and to them accepting, which I can, I believe can be done by the town manager. But I will confirm with him, hopefully either this week, or maybe even as Thursday's building committee meeting.
Thank you so much. I'll entertain a motion to accept the superintendent's report.
Make a motion, accept the superintendent's report.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moves us to number six, school committee business. A, action investigation coach. I will again ask the, ask for a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the final results of the investigation as presented by the superintendent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Brings us to B, fundraiser for South Kingstown High School Interact Club. So this had came before us before, and we asked that they put in the, the required paperwork, and they did. So. Michael, do you want to talk about it, or do we just want to?
So again, they came before us. The Interact Club is, I believe, the new club to South Kingstown High School. It is associated with the Rotary International and wants to capitalize on the time, talent, talent and treasure that is the, our arts students in the district and continue to flourish upon those and take advantage of those and continue to grow students who will hopefully become part of the theater and performance ensembles and troops here at the South Kingstown High School. And so I am supportive of this, both as an, as a new club, as well as a worthwhile endeavor that benefits all students, or looks to benefit all students within the district.
I'll make a motion to accept the fundraiser for South Kingstown High School Interact Club.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And I just want to thank the students for their initiative on, on this project. So it sounds like such a great endeavor, and I wish them all the luck. All right, that brings us to C, discussion action update of fiscal year 2024-25 fund balance.
Thank you. So I would, I would ask that to turn your attention to the memo that Mr. Ferrucci has prepared at my request. Per our last meeting, we wanted to make sure that, again, all of these totals are unaudited, but to give us the best best estimate of where we are at with the, our end of the year fund balance, both in terms of usage in F, as budgeted in FY '25, as well as what was budgeted in FY '25. Did we meet or increase that so that we can then make decisions regarding FY '26? I will remind the committee specifically of action taken either at our last meeting or the meeting before in terms of using or the need to use, or the approval of an additional half million dollars in FY '26 specifically for the cap, towards the capital improvement plan in order to make the repairs to the Broad Rock roof. So that's why if that capital funds committed for FY '26 looks higher than you imagine or remember, it is because of the additional half million that was approved before. And Mr. Ferrucci is here, and if you have any questions about any of these facts, figures, or the process by which he came up with, again, this unaudited amount, we will take this amount well as, and then at our next meeting, we will hopefully have more complete potential enrollment numbers in which the committee, two, two things that we'll need to do, we'll need to formally adopt a revised budget based off of the state funding and any federal funding that has come in on July, by July 15th, we'll be doing that. Although the governor's budget was just passed on Friday, we did not have time to, to update our proposed approved budget that we have and get the, the, the approved numbers from the governors and the, the general assembly. So we'll have that before you on the 15th. And also at that time, again, I'll give a detailed enrollment report. And then we will need to contemplate the need of either recalling teachers, keeping our staffing levels the way that they are and waiting a little bit longer, or potentially recalling teachers in order to ease up on class sizes and the potential of grade level, grade level closures. Currently, we, well, so that's where we stand. Currently, we, well, so that's where we stand, and that's why these these numbers are before you today to let you know that, again, that we may have or we're going to need to have potential discussions about recalling folks that were part of our cuts to FY26 that would then eat into that fund balance if we did not go back to the town council, as well as if we had to open up any other additional sections that were not part of those reductions. Those two would eat in fund balance should we not go before the town council.
All right, so I have a question. On the number that says 1625, which looks like a reduction of fund balance of $700,000. I'm trying to remember. I don't have it in front of me. Is that the number that we budgeted in the 2025 budget? I want to say it was 400,000 or something, but I can't remember. So what was the amount budgeted and how are we can to the budget number?
So we we are spending less than what was budgeted out of fund balance in FY25. So at around this time last year, this body was taking action because the state gave allegedly extra money, but then took it away when they changed the benefit rate, which then cost us more money. So that was adjusted, I believe, and don't want to put them on the spot, but I will if you're able to, Mr. Ferrucci. Okay, if you have the numbers regarding what was budgeted, I believe last time I had checked in that that is, that is less than what is budgeted.
I appreciate any numbers you have.
Okay.
Yeah. Evening, Madam Chair and members of the committee. To get to the point, the net numbers is the way Mr. Kilpatrick explained it to me, includes 1.5 million of capital in the operating. So there was savings on the operations side so that the net impact was only $700,000, which is what the superintendent is referring to, that the operational side did well, but you still spent the 1.4 million, I believe it came in at for the capital, so that's a net number.
Okay, yeah, the light bulb just went off. So because I was thinking of just what we were spending for operational out of fund balance, but you're saying combined capital and operational, we're only down to 700. That's great. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Glad I understand.
It's for you, but I want to think we have, I think we have fiscal things for for a while, so we'll let you get comfortable up there.
I was just trying to get you to get your steps into the day. No. All right. So being an application at the table, not the accountant, I just have a presentation question to those. Them correctly, the ones in the brackets, those are negative numbers.
That's correct.
Okay. Why can't a accountant choose negative signs? But we'll have that discussion later. Thank you. That's what I thought from reading the whole thing, but I just needed to verify that. Thank you very much.
Yep.
I have a question for you. I have a question for you. It's and it's about the, it's about the classrooms and the sizes, and I know my, I don't want us to get into detail right now, but it more is a matter of, I want to make sure that we aren't too late if we need to ask for more money, right? So I just want to make sure that our timing, however, we need to set up our next agenda items or getting a budget subcommittee or whatever it is, I just want to make sure that we don't act too late and we end up having to bus our kids out of their home district. I'd rather us move quicker when possible so that we could keep the kids in our homeschools and and get the sections opened and the roles funded properly. So I just, I have big concerns about acting too late.
I I'm confident that once we're, once we're able, once we make a decision in terms of that, that that need is definitively there and that those bodies are coming in because because we, of the years of declining enrollment where we have been laying folks off, we will be able to move fairly quickly because we have a fairly extensive recall list that will allow us to recall people to those positions and not interview, not have to put out things on school spring, not to convene and interview committees. So in terms of expediting that and knowing who it will be or whether someone accepts it is something that will expedite that process should we need to go down that road.
So to Kate's point, do we have actual dates that we know would be the the last dates that we could actually go to the town and ask for money versus well, a date that we're working with in terms of finding out how many students coming in?
At what point do we ask for the money? At what point will we need to ask for money?
So there's, there's a lot of moving parts because they were still waiting for enrollment numbers. And and Michael, we've had a lot of discussions where soon as we know that need, we can pull that trigger. But we're also have the budget from the state, which maybe we get a tiny bit more money from the state, and we're, they just passed that, we're just waiting for those final numbers. There's no official procedure for us to ask for more money. There's no set date. So it's not going to be like it's going to be too late at any point. But we we probably need to have this on our next agenda and the next one so that when we are, when we know we need this, then we are ready to move quickly. Yes.
Because it may not be too late as far as deadlines for asking money or what have you, but there's going to be a too late for recalling a teacher. They may already be employed somewhere else. It may be too late because a family is like, hmm, you're going to send me to Mattoonik. I live in West Kingston. I'm going to Monsignor Clark. There's a lot of two lates that I want to be cautious.
That's the, the one that the last one you said is the one that we're most cognizant of because if if you don't have a good answer to families, they're going to make
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Yeah. So the sooner we we know the better, but I know Michael is is working on this like diligently.
You just have to be sure that, again, we can put it on the agenda for next time and discuss all of these facets. So if we could keep this to the fund balance, I don't, I know it's an issue, I know your desire to to discuss it, but I think it probably would be better if we save a more robust discussion for a moment when we have it on the agenda.
Okay, so we ultimately with this report, this was step one. And so that we know what we have unaudited, what we anticipate, what we're going to be ending the year so that we can have those discussions at future agenda items. And I have been communicating that to families where we are in limbo in terms of both the meeting tonight, as well as our anticipated that I will want to have decisions made by July, by our meeting on July 15th.
I, yeah, I just want to, because I know this isn't up on the screen, and I want to make sure people at home know what we're talking, what numbers we're talking about here. So in July, we had of 2024, we have an audited fund balance of 4,486,741. What we're talking about is that we had a net reduction of that 700,000 to fund the FY25 budget. Is that correct? Okay. And also kind of confirming these numbers with my head as well. Yeah, between capital and operations and netted out to, reducing 700,000 from that fund balance. Additionally, in our budget for FY26, we've committed 1.5, 1,595,223 to the FY26 budget, which means we have the projected fund balance of 2,191,518 as a projected unaudited fund balance for FY25, which could potentially be used to fund shortfalls in 2026 if we chose, so chose to do so. So we would maybe be able to temporarily fill some holes if we know we're going to have some problems with having to bus students elsewhere. I would, I'd be very much in favor of using some of that money and then coming back and saying, hey, our fund balance is dipping way too low. We need to go back and and do that. But however we do that, we can talk about that. As as our lawyer pointed out, we can probably talk about that in the next meeting.
So this is actually very good news. So if we're in a strong position with our fund balance, that does give us choices, like James was saying. So I think we need to thank Ryan, wherever you are, I hope you're watching, and Tony for putting this together for us. Thank you so much. Any questions? Okay, so.
We don't need to vote on anything?
No.
No, okay.
All right. So then we can move on to number, number D, the proposed the proposed substitute rates for school year 25-26.
So you have before you the daily superintendent or superintendent, excuse me, substitute rate for next year. My thanks to Deb Durda for putting this together over the past few years and this year, as well as watching in the general assembly, the potential of or the the raise to the minimum wage and making sure that 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 is, that we are on course for what the general assembly did apply for next year, as well as my thanks to Mr. Ferrucci, who has gone through the budget and believes that these rates can can be, can be sustained. Oh, the the only other additional or change that is not marked here that you would see is that that substitute, that bottom paragraph, substitute teachers who serve in a single position, we increased that to 20 days for that $20 per day because that's the current operational threshold that we have to put on email, to issue computers, to get pass. So we start initiating longer term process at the 20 day mark. And so we just combined operations with a payroll schedule to be consistent in that, as well as generally the amount of time where somebody's, if there are that many consecutive days, they are taking on additional responsibilities, often of correcting, of doing lesson planning. And so hence that additional pay bump.
Is is that? Do we know usually when somebody's going to be doing 20 consecutive days? Just before that happens, or are there instances where people might end up doing 20 days without us knowing that? And I guess the question then is, would it be retroactive?
It would be retroactive, and you would get notice of those in the personnel report. So to the best of the ability, to the best of our ability, when people put in for leave, and we expect those to go on. If they are not of the FMLA type or the long term where we're taking somebody and, you know, ultimately putting them on a, you know, a step because they, you know, they're out for a year, a duration. But generally, we make every effort to notify this committee and know well in advance, as well as get people who are certified in that, specifically in that domain.
Mr. Petraza, I have a couple of questions. Do these rates put us in a place where we're competitive with our neighbors?
We are regionally competitive. Absolutely.
Thank you. And my second question is, the, the 20 days, serve in a single position for 20 days, is that they have to serve in the position for 20 days and then their pay gets bumped? Or if they come on board and we know they're going to serve for 20 days, their pay starts out at the 20, at the increased rate?
After the 20.
Okay, that's what I assumed. Thank you.
All right, so we need a motion to accept the substitute rates?
Make a motion to approve the substitute rates for the following school year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is the RFP number 2461 supplemental transportation award.
So I'm happy to speak to this. I believe this comes before this committee on a yearly basis. Basically, this is the transportation rate for athletics where we do not utilize statewide or that it would not be appropriate for us to have, you know, full size school buses transporting teams.
I'll make a motion to approve RFP number 2461 as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. So that brings us to number, discussion, action, town bid, SK 0022 FAC Elevator Services Award.
So Mr. Gould is here, and so please correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe we are looking to, we had done this a few months ago where we are looking to piggyback on a townwide bid based on the services and then contract, much like we did, I believe, with the fire services, fire inspection. This would be for the inspection, maintenance, and repair of our of our elevators. And so as the town, and the town has taken action. So the town has approved their side of the bid on this. And so now it is before you for action if you are so inclined.
So I just have a question on the numbers presented to us tonight. These are the the schools portion of it, because I assume the town will be paying some portion of it, or is this all out of the school budget? Can you mind? Just so the folks at home in the recording can pick it up.
If I may just interject, the bid documents actually have it broken down by school, where Atlantic Elevator was going to be providing services over a three year period. South Kingston High School, Peastale. So it's broken down by school. Those are the school costs, and they are budgeted.
Right. Okay. So these costs will be for the school district and there is no town buildings on here.
The documentation and the award that we're going to provide will be based on the detail level of what school and how much per building per year.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any questions? All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve town bid, SK 0022 FAC Elevator Services Award.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is the State NPR Award, Replace Repair Chain Link Fence at Peastale Elementary School.
Madam Chair, if I might. I just wanted to bring to the attention, the next three are contract awards being recommended for projects that are going to be taken on this coming summer. Mr. Gould has been in contact with the companies, and it was determined the most efficient and effective way of getting the services done before school opens up in September is to take advantage of what they call the master price agreement at the state level. And so the contracts are bid at a state level for typical services, and it provides standard rates. And what Mr. Gould has done for us is go before the MPA roster of companies and typical services. And so what I provided for you this evening is our recommendation to award. They're all budgeted. And we've also provided the state MPA contract that shows you which companies are on that particular roster. And each one of the recommended companies going forward this evening, do we noted, so you have documentation that they are the MPA, and we're following those cost prices for the various projects that you've got articulated before you, just as a macro level to understand the use of the master price agreement that the state has in place for school districts. Thank you.
So I have clarifying question. I probably should know the answer myself, but I I don't have it with me. These are coming out of the capital improvement planning.
That's correct. And these are the dollars of the 1.5 million that we talked about earlier that's being targeted for FY25. that's being targeted for, uh, FY twenty-six.
Have we, um, had conversations and or confirmation that these were all part of, um, part of our, um, the school building?
CIP?
Yeah, that, well, no, the, our, our reimbursement, is it our typical, um, housing reimbursement of thirty-five percent, or would these included in our bond and qualify at the fifty percent reimbursement rate? Do we know that?
I was, I was prepared to say, yes, they are going to be reimbursed by the state, and I'm taking those steps to get the communication to the state level, but to your point about whether it's the thirty-five percent or the fifty percent levels, I do not know that at this point. I'll have that for July fifteenth. I'll, I'll, I can take a look at it, and we'll include that in our conversation about budget for next year.
Excellent, and if, and once we know that answer, regardless of whichever it is, we want to make sure we get that information to the town, because that goes to the town and not back to us, and, um, hopefully could be used to defer our bond, um, payments. So, thank you.
Very good.
Kate, I just want to ask you, when you say used by the town, you're talking about to debt service?
Yep.
Yeah, no, I, but I think we need to make them aware that all this early money is coming from our repairs, out of our fund balance. They need to know that. All right, thank you. All right, do I have a motion to accept this, um, NPR award?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the state NPR award for, for replace repair chain link fencing at Peastale Elementary School as presented this evening.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Okay, we move on to the second NPR award, Replace Carpeting at Broad Rock Middle School and Peastale Elementary School.
Oh. What it, what are you asking? Okay, so, so at Broad Rock, um, it's not, not Peastale this year. Need to talk into it, all right. So the carpet that's being replaced is just at Broad Rock this summer, yes. And it's carpet that needs to be replaced, it's peeling up, it's a tripping hazard, and part of it in the library, um, is where they pulled out the old circulation desk, it's all down to bare cement.
Just, just a quick question. How old is the carpet that's being replaced?
It's original to the building.
Oh, got it.
Which was built in, it opened in two thousand and one, yeah.
All right, do we have a motion to replace this carpet?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the state NPR award to replace the carpet in Broad Rock Middle School.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, got a third NPR award, Replace HVAC Units at Broad Rock Middle School and Peastale Elementary School.
So once again, this is just going to be at Broad Rock, the, the HVAC systems. Um, once again, Broad Rock is coming up on twenty-four, twenty-five years old, and they're original to the building. Over the last winter, we've had the heating company there for over a month straight, just trying to keep up, and it's just, it's reached, reached its end.
And, and this was outlined in the CIP, so it's completely budgeted, this we've expected.
This was expected.
That award, so.
In the CIP, as well as considered, um, when taking on that the entire Broad Rock roof is due to be replaced, could be replaced now, or within the next few years, let's put in the, let's, uh, I had brought this up in previous reports, let's put the HVAC units in, have them walk on the old existing roof, to put those in, the ducts, all of those things, and then in our next phase of the CIP, which is in our, uh, state report, the, the roofing, um, we, we would do that, or, or look to elevate that in twenty, FY twenty-seven's CIP.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid award to replace the HVAC unit at Broad Rock Middle School.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. Appreciate, appreciate you being here to explain that. Okay, so that brings us to J, um, Legislative Liaison Updates, Current Initiatives Before the House and Senate Relating to Public Education. So, Michelle, did you have anything?
So I, I do just have a couple of things. If I was paying correct attention to the news, they've adjourned for the, for the session, okay. Um, I, I have notes on my phone, I'm sorry. Um, so Representative Fogarty called me, um, a couple of weeks ago, and, um, Mr. Estivo helped me with my memory, um, about banning books, and she said she was going into a hearing on this new, um, uh, bill. It's called the Freedom to Read Act, and anybody that wants to, it says this act would promote free expression and free access of information by prohibiting the censorship of library materials. And if you read the details of that bill, you find that library materials refers to public libraries and public school libraries. This act would require the creation of a model policy relative to library materials within a public library and a school library. Um, and it did pass, and the, the bill number, for those of you that want to look it up, is five-seven, H-five-seven-two-six. So I told her, and her question was, had we gotten any requests to, um, ban books? And I referenced the, uh, resolution that Mr. Shear had brought before us a little over a year ago, eh, explained that to her, and, um, she said, okay, fine, and a little while later, she texted me and said the bill passed. Um, the summary that I have here, this says that the goal of this act, Freedom to Read Act, um, for, the goal is to protect teachers and librarians and to prevent book bans. So, um, you know, personally, I was pretty excited about that. Um, the other thing I wanted to say, even though the general assembly has adjourned for the, um, for the session, I anticipate over the next week or so, there, I might get some phone calls or text messages from, um, reps or senators with more information, um, and Mr. Duffy will probably send out more additional information, so if you would, um, put that on one more agenda, then we can take a beat until January, um, next year, and, and I may come before you at another meeting and say, yeah, I don't have anything. Uh, the other thing that with regard to the legislation that I would like to, um, request is Mr. Pollak, it's my understanding your office receives, like, a summary of all laws that have passed, um, related to education.
I actually put that together. So what I will do is I, let's start at the beginning. I usually wait until July first, just to make sure, because there's sometimes there are bills that get passed or signed by the governor or get passed, um, without governor approval, or don't need, um, governor approval. I wait until the end.
Yes.
And on July first, and I'll run a search through all of the, uh, legislation that passed and create a summary.
So, um, if our agenda for our July meeting is not too long, maybe Mr. Pollak could present that, and otherwise, perhaps at our retreat, um, so that we would have the opportunity, um, you know, I don't know about the rest of you, but I picked this bill up and I read it, and I have to read it like fifteen times before I understand what the ramifications of it are. So, um, I would appreciate if you could do that for us, Mr. Pollak.
Just, just know that. I might have to wait till the retreat, because I think, uh, there's scheduling conflicts for Mr. Pollak on the fifteenth, so.
Fortunately, I can't be here on the fifteenth, because I can certainly be here. I, believe me, I wish. Um, but, but so the goal of the report, the goal of my summary is to kind of, is to take the laws, because some of them can be voluminous, and to whittle it down to what folks need to know, you know, like practical information regarding each law. Um, sometimes it is more in-depth, but it depends upon what, what's, um, you know, the actual piece of legislation that has passed. Yeah.
I think it's a good idea to have that on the next agenda, so that we can, I mean, kind of look at it, and, and if Michael can't be here, we would have a support to discuss, so, um, but that would be a great idea.
And also, um, related to legislation, um, there was discussion among a few of us, like, kind of offline of things that we could look forward to doing, and, um, I think it would be nice if we could have, um, in the fall, before the general assembly convenes, you know, convene until January second, or whatever is the next non-holiday after January first. Um, so they have more late afternoons and evenings available, um, if we could schedule a work session, um, sometime in October or November, um, with our legislators, and just have a discussion on what are we looking for from them? And what are they looking for going into the next session of the general assembly? And, um, you know, when I was first elected in the dark ages, when we still using stone tablets, um, we, we had that kind of a work session, and we had, you know, it was at the other end of the cafeteria, but we just had a big circle, and it was a great, robust discussion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, no, I think that we would benefit from talking with our delegates, um, immensely, so I think that's a very good, just, good idea. Um, so, take, taking notes, so, but I'm going to ask you to remind me when we get to November, so, because I, I do think it's something we want to make sure we pursue. Yeah, but thank you, Michelle, for the update. Really appreciate it. All right, and we're going to ask Kate for a building, a school building committee update.
So I don't have much of an update to, to give this meeting. We did go to the town council last night for the bi-weekly update. It was a very short, sweet, to the point where hitting all our current dates that were mapped out for us, um, in our joint meeting recently. Um, at the moment, no, really nothing glaring standing out. I will say that, uh, Michael and I were, uh, privy to a sneak peek to the latest renderings that are going to be formally presented in public at our Thursday School Building Committee meeting, very exciting, and actually was like, wow, like, it was, it was impressive already, but it's like, super impressive. I'm very excited to see it. I'm, I'm excited to present it to the public, and then again, when we get a chance, um, there's been some more value engineering, there's been some tweaks, but it looks so impressive, and there's one particular view where you can, it, it's as though you were out on that street looking in, and you can see Hazard off to the side, and it really, it really kind of seals the deal as to orienting yourself and understanding what this is going to look like, and it's super cool. So I'm very excited, um, to be able to present that. Um, our Thursday meeting is, uh, we've switched to our summer schedules, so we will be at the town hall at eight-thirty, um, preferably, again, uh, we're trying to keep it to a hard stop, because people have to get to work, um, for nine-thirty, um, but, um, we have that, and just kind of, it's more housekeeping, making sure we're, we're hitting our dates, um, making sure that we have our plans settled and in motion for, uh, first day of school logistics, making sure the temporary road, um, is hitting its states, and just constantly being on top of Rhode Island Energy, being on top of town council, being on top of RIDE, making sure they're hand-in-hand with us all the way. So once we get, uh, you know, a next vote needs to be taken, everybody's in place for it. Um, I don't think a next vote needs to be taken until August twelfth. I would have said eleventh, but that's a holiday, so it'll be the twelfth. So we'll get into detail on that on Thursday, and then in our next meeting, I'll be able to give a, a bit of a more concrete update to you guys. But tune in Thursday morning if you want to see the new school.
So just, um, a follow-up to what I had asked Phil at the June ninth meeting. Um, I, I, I do have a little bit of concern of students and faculty that need to go between Hazard, and do you have an update on that?
Wait, that is, um, included, uh, in the rendering we saw on Monday, the path was not, um, included in the rendering, but we asked, and they said, nope, it's going to be there, and it's actually going to be from basically, um, the outside learning area that will be in the, where the parent drop-off is, there'll be a path that connects directly to the Hazard building. And, um, and we had a little bit of discussion, and, um, we'll get into more detail at, at the School Building Committee meeting first, but we had some discussions around making sure that various memorials that are around our school are, are documented to be able to transfer into the new building. And what we, there was kind of some chatter around maybe that path, um, be kind of dedicated as a memorial, and, and could have kind of nods to different students that we've lost over the years that we have memorials in, in the school, um, for, um, and just kind of, you know, throw, throw in ideas out there of how we can actually make it a little bit more connective with the Hazard history and our history, and, um, so, but it will be there.
So that leads me to another question. So thank you for the path, though, because when I saw those original renders, my, oh, they still need to go between those two. Um, there is a memorial, um, and a war memorial on the Hazard site.
Yep.
That the two-hundred-and-fifty committee is putting together a separate memorial to go with it. Um, and I believe they're going to have, like, the, a dedication ceremony in about a year, like, August twenty-twenty-six. I just want to, um, maybe need to connect with that committee to, to find out more about that memorial. I know there was some concern about it's going to be a construction site right there, is that going to be a problem with having a celebration?
Yeah, it shouldn't be, because the, once we get the new road put in, and then it, it will be a firm delineation, and then we'll have, our fencing will be up, and so they'll have, but that parking lot Hazard and that whole area would, will be free and clear, so.
No, that's great, um, but, and I do, I do know that there's a lot of concern where classes have given class gifts and all of those things, so that you've got your eye on that is wonderful.
Yeah, we want, so in our Thursday morning meeting, one of the agenda items is to kind of, uh, take an action to give a clear direction to make sure we, I know it, Chip has it, but we, we want to make sure we have everything fully documented and kind of checked twice. We have the whole, uh, you know, our auditorium is Veterans Memorial, and th- those, those walls are, have all sorts of plaques, you know, that we want to make sure we collect them all, and we make sure we have thoughtful representation once it's transferred into the new building, and that is all, that, it's already on the project team's radar, so.
I wish it could transfer to the murals, because my son actually painted one.
Yeah, right, right.
But sometimes you just kind of have to lose some things, but I know you're trying really hard to, to capture everything. I'm so, um, grateful, and I know the community is, so thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything else for the building, School Building Committee? Okay, um, brings us to the, um, subcommittee update for the Strategic Planning Subcommittee.
So the Strategic Planning Subcommittee met a couple of weeks ago, the twelfth, thank you, Mr. Pajaza. Um, I was going to have to look it up. Um, and I think we had a great discussion around mission, vision, and, um, it, it was a very robust discussion, and for me, you know, I bring my educator hat to these meetings, and it was really good to hear other people. it was a very robust discussion and for me, you know, I bring my educator hat to these meetings and it was really good to hear other peoples from outside of education perspective, so I thought that meeting went really well and we have a long work session coming up in July, July 10th. And so, at our July 15th meeting, we can give additional information. We got into using some AI to craft some mission statements, which was actually fun for me.
Do you have anything to add to that, Mr. Pajaza?
No, I would just add that in terms of the, in terms of the discussion that just, so this committee knows that we did go through a, almost a tuning protocol of taking a look at different missions and examples. And it wasn't until we actually jumped into a draft mission that was built upon the Equity Audit and community feedback, that members of that committee finally came up with or started recognizing things that they, that they wanted, that, that resonated with them. And so that the, the Equity Audit i- is already being used in terms of crafting the mission and I'm, I'm very cautiously optimistic, well, I'm optimistic is that we will have something before you as a result of the, our next meeting on the 10th, that we will have something for this committee for the 15th.
I agree. It was also, one of the things that we did, and this is just my personal take on it, one of the things that we did between the last meeting and the one before that was investigate other strategic plans and find good and bad ones. And I got into the strategic plans and I, I kind of focused on the districts in the state of Rhode Island. And I started with ones I'm familiar with and ones that are constantly thrown in our face. And I was very surprised to learn the number of them that had expired strategic plans on their websites. I was, I was completely shocked. But, you know, I, some of them still had good mission statements, but so I look forward to the work continuing, thank you.
I want to say thank you for your work on this. I think it's really vitally important to have a strategic plan, especially grounded in the Equity Audit, which sounds like you guys are keeping that top of mind and as one of your focuses of, of the, the plan, so I really appreciate that, thank you.
And I just want to echo what James said, I mean, a great start, sounds like a wonderful committee with wonderful people volunteering their time to serve. I'm so grateful to this community that has members like that in our administration. It's exciting that we have this Equity Audit, going to plan in, in order to, you know, make it an effective part of our, of, of our school district, so, thank, thank you, Michelle and Michael for all the work that you guys are doing with the Subcommittee.
The other thing that, after, you know, we, this last meeting was our second meeting with all the members of the Strategic Planning Subcommittee. And when I started, you know, like, putting a face with a name, it was good for me personally to see that we had some community members of that Subcommittee that are new to the district as parents. So, I thought that as well as some who have, you know, been parents in the district for, for a while. So, and, and a lot of good viewpoints from various aspects, like I said.
I would like just to highlight Mr. Shear's, who's not here today, his, his participation in that and his emphasis on straight to the point and brief, so that, again, getting, getting to that core mission and he's keeping the, the word salad down to a minimum.
Every committee needs a bread share. But thank you guys, this, it's exciting work that, I'm glad we were moving forward with, so it's all great news. Okay, that's going to bring us to the policies. We have two second reads tonight. First one, policy number 5142, new administration of medical marijuana. James?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this policy came to us in the last meeting for a first read. And I haven't received any feedback, so I think it is broadly, you know, seems to be broadly okay with everyone and hoping for approval tonight. This is in addition to our existing medical policy of administering prescription medications. It is, as I understand it, required by state law, so there's something that we need to, a policy we need to have on the books. So, if there's any more comments or Mr. Pajaza has anything to add to that, you know, happy to take any questions or comments. Or a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 5142, Administration of Medical Marijuana.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we have the second policy, 515, also a new policy, professional conduct with students.
Thank you again. This is another one that came before us in our last meeting and is a guideline for professional conduct with students. It just highlights things that I think are, you know, relatively commonsensical things, but just puts them in policy so we can take action if these items are, are violated in some, some way, so it gives us a, a way to, you know, give our educators a guideline for interaction with our students and, you know, help them understand where the lines are and know if they might be potentially crossing those lines. So, this is, I think, protection for them, a protection for us and protection for the students. Happy to take any comments, questions.
The only comment I have is, thank you, I'm glad we finally have this on the books. I think it is super important. I think there sometimes are blurry lines, our professionals that work in our building behave in a professional manner. And so this serves, as you said, as a protection for them as well as our students and I think it's about time. So, I appreciate that, that we're, we're having it and, and hopefully we'll approve it.
Yeah, I think this can be a, a difficult policy to come up with and, and, you know, and I know a lot of work has gone into this with the committees. I just want to thank you and the other members of the committee for putting in all this hard work. I think you've done a good job with this.
I think the, and line share, the thanks should go to Mr. Pajaza, because I was, you know, I was at that meeting where they came up with this, it is an amalgamation of existing policies in other districts and I think it takes the best of all those policies and puts them together and, you know, some of them, just on first blush, when I was preparing to, you know, a previous policy meeting to look at this, I think there were some questionable comments, questionable things, but they didn't make that in here. So, I think this is a well-thought-out, well-put-together policy, so I thank you, Mr. Pajaza, for doing that.
Mr. Estivo, has this been run by the teachers or the teaching room?
I'm not aware. I know it's been run through legal, but.
I've had ongoing discussion this entire year with them regarding the need for this policy and, and putting it forward. We also have a bargaining unit member on, on the policy Subcommittee.
Thank you. If you need a motion, I'll make a motion to approve policy number 5155.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, guys.
Brings us to the last thing on our agenda, number seven.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And we are calling it quit at eight.